Hey, you're all set.
Thanks. Hello, everyone. Welcome to the February 28th meeting of the Board of Selectment Interview Committee to just to talk to some applicants about volunteer positions. I have to read a script before we can start the meeting, so please bear with me. This open meeting of the Board of Selectment Interview Committee is being conducted remotely pursuant to Chapter 22 of the Acts of 2022, an act relative to extending certain COVID-19 measures adopted during the state of emergency and signed into law on July 16, 2022. All members of the interview committee are allowed and encouraged to participate remotely. The order allows the interview committee to meet entirely remotely so long as reasonable public access is afforded so that the public can follow along with the deliberations of the meeting. Members of the public who wish to view the live stream of this meeting may do so by going to Northborough Remote Meetings on YouTube via the link listed on the agenda. This meeting will not feature public comment. Each vote taken this evening will be conducted by voice. By roll call vote, sorry. So I just want to make everyone aware that Diane Whackel is one of our hosts. And Jason Peral, you are the other interviewer, the other Board of Selectment member here. Can you just confirm that you can hear us?
Yes, I can.
Thanks. Okay, so right now I'm going to admit Liz Nolan and Diane Irvine for the first interview. So if you could just say if you're here, I think. So both of you look to me like you're, Liz, you just unmuted yourself. Are you? Okay. And Diane is, it looks like Diane should be here.
Yes, I just unmuted. Hello.
Hello, how are you?
Good. How are you doing?
Very well. Okay, Liz, just confirm that you're here. I don't see your picture.
You don't see my picture?
Oh, now I do. Okay, great.
Yeah, I am here.
Okay.
Hi, Jason.
Diane, you are interested in scholarship and council on aging. And Liz is our scholarship committee chairperson. So if you wouldn't mind just telling us a little bit about yourself, you know, if the public is viewing this, they haven't seen your application. And it looks like you have a very, very interesting background in education. So if you would, please tell us something about it and why you're interested in this committee.
Sure. I didn't know if there were any particular openings now, but I figured I could put my application there, you know, in case an alternate was needed. This was a committee I've had a lot of experience with. I've been a member of my teachers' union for 32 years. And on numerous occasions, we gave three $1,000 scholarships to students in Sudbury. Most often students from Lincoln Sudbury, but you know, it was open to other schools as well, as long as the students were Sudbury residents or had gone, you know, to school in Sudbury. And I just found it very, very rewarding, you know. And in that particular instance, there were occasions where I had been the teacher of some of those students, so that made it even more special. But we, you know, we looked, we had specific criteria we looked for. And we followed it, we went over it, and you know, we would excuse ourselves if it was somebody that, you know, maybe was a neighbor or some kind of a conflict of interest. But it was just the kind of committee that I guess I really enjoyed after teaching for 32 years. I'm just recently retired, you know, about a year and a half. And I really thought that, you know, students who have worked so hard, you know, deserve when they've shown themselves with community service and academics and just the fact that they really want to go to school, you know, it's just so rewarding for them to be able to get a scholarship from the town that they grew up in. I know both of my daughters are graduates of Algonquin Regional High School. My whole family attended Boston College. And for my husband and I, both being educators, to put two children through Boston College was really not an easy feat at all. And we were so familiar with the scholarship process and so grateful and thankful that they received so many scholarships. One of them being the Fireman Scholarship, you know, one of them being a scholarship for people whose parents worked in town. And these scholarships were, you know, so important in helping them get to where they are today and being able to have a good education. And again, they were just so appreciative, you know, to be able to get those. I'm trying to think now, because it was a few years back, the Chamber of Commerce Scholarship, both of them received as well, our union scholarships. And, you know, for all their hard work at Algonquin, again, we were just so appreciative of being able to receive that help. And I thought, gee, this was a committee that I really felt I'm suited for, that I can, you know, look at it from a lens of a teacher, of an educator, and how hard students have to work to be able to afford college today. So that, you know, I felt like, as I say, that's the first committee I'm interviewing for tonight. But I do feel like it's a committee that I could really, you know, help them look at all, it goes into being a student and how hard it is to be a student today.
Well, it sounds like we're getting you at an opportune time, having just retired and interested in giving back now. So you talked a lot about, and I think we all can accept the fact that with college prices the way they are, any little bit helps. But and Liz chiming in here too, it's, could you, or would you like to speak a little bit about how you set criteria and think about that for, you know, academic achievement or whatever, whatever the scholarship is for. It might not be just for, you know, perfect grades, but.
Right. Well, I think whatever you set as a committee to be your rubric, you know, you have to follow that. So you have to kind of come to some kind of consensus at the beginning. What are you looking for? In our case, we were looking, you know, for students that had been from town, that had achieved, you know, pretty high academic standards. But sometimes there was that criteria of like a special circumstance that we would, you know, take into account as well. Maybe, you know, somebody who really needed money, but you had to, you know, because of a hardship. But you had to really like look, set your criteria first and then, you know, stick to that. And then with each application, you know, came a big discussion where you had to, you know, debate and say why you wanted a particular candidate. And, you know, it was always you voted in a fair and democratic process to see which one the most people, you know, wanted. So it was a fair process where you had a lot of committee members from different backgrounds all coming together in a consensus.
Diane, did you have a lot of students applying?
We did. And I mean, the applications and the resumes we got were just amazing, you know. They were just so exemplary that it would be, it was always very, very difficult to choose.
Liz, do you want to comment on your workload here or?
Sure. It's nice to see you, Diane.
Yes, Liz, nice to meet you. And I see Jason, I wasn't sure if it was going to be Kristen or Jason tonight. Hello.
So the current members of the scholarship committee are pretty new. So we've, in the last year, what we focused on is bringing awareness that the fund and the committee actually exists. A lot of people aren't aware that, you know, it's there, both students as well as people to donate. In the past, predominantly, the funding has come from fundraising, which we have kind of tried to ramp up a little bit recently. And it also has been from people adding money to their tax bill. But we find that that's a very small part of what we can touch upon. So we really want to kind of embrace it and bring more awareness to it, to look at it, you know, bring in money different ways. So fundraising is a big portion of what we're trying to do. And I know you probably have some experience with that through your committee that you have worked on previously. Right now, we're, you know, we've been brainstorming. We did a mini photo shoot that was great with a local photographer. We're also teaming up with Algonquin, actually, doing graduation yard signs, which you see, you know, around graduation time. So their principal, Sean Bevan, who's also part of our committee as a non-voting member, he actually was the one who came up with that suggestion. And it has worked out really well so that, you know, we can raise some funds that way. What we were finding is that last year, because of the pandemic, we had very little funding to do. But we did manage to award $1,800 to five students, but they were small. But again, any help is great when you're in college. Our hope is that we can do, you know, larger ones that kind of benefit the students a little bit more. This year is kind of, like I said, in the works, but hopefully we can grow from there in the next couple of years. And we have a great committee. Everybody brings a little something different, you know, to it as far as their skill set. But really, you know, a lot of this past year, like I said, it's been about brainstorming ideas for fundraising. We've been, you know, bringing awareness to the committee itself, you know, just doing a lot of outreach. Hopefully in the next year, we'll, you know, do a little bit more than that as well.
I had actually read the minutes of the old meetings and I saw you had done the signs, which I thought were great, you know, in the pandemic and continuing to keep those. We would have a road race and we'd usually have a teacher basketball game, you know, that would be the two main things that would fund our scholarships, two main events.
Right. Well, we're trying to find events that are community-related, you know, to, you know, again, bring awareness that the committee is there. And that it also isn't just for Algonquin, it's for, again, any student in Northboro that is a high school senior too. So, you know, we did a lot of outreach to other schools that may have Northboro students. Again, that's been, you know, slow going and the majority of them are still Algonquin applicants, I think. But going forward, we're in the application process now. And we'll be, at our next meeting in March, we'll be starting to review the applications and we need to make our decision by the end of April. You're coming in at a good time.
Well, that's what I gathered from, yeah, looking at the previous notes. And about how many applications did you receive last year?
So last year, we probably had about, I want to say like around 50 maybe, which I thought was a good amount. And our criteria is based, you know, on need as well as, you know, an essay is actually very important to us to try to get it to know the student a little bit. Academics are important, but it isn't necessarily your A student, it's just, you know, someone that can show that, you know, they have, they can be successful. It's also, you know, someone who is involved in the community with community service, that they also are working. So they are also contributing towards their success as well. So we have a different, you know, some criteria that we discussed as a committee, some that we are required to have. So we're just kind of going from there. Our next meeting, actually, we're going to come up with a rubric to really, before we start reviewing them. So your input from what you've done in the past would probably be very helpful.
Great, great. All right.
Liz, from what I understand, we have an opening now, right?
Okay, when I spoke with Diane Whackel, at first we didn't, so I wasn't sure, but I was putting my application in anyhow. Because, you know, I knew that that was the one I had the most experience with.
Yep. So actually, when you first showed your interest, we did not have an opening, but since then, we do.
And it's a good, as you say, it's a good timeline now with March coming right up. Sure, March and April. Right.
By any slight chance, do you know your March meeting date?
Uh, March 22nd.
Oh, great. Okay, because these applications will be confirmed at our next meeting, which is March 13th. So after that, people should be able to join right in. So Diane is going to stay on for an interview for Council on Aging. Diane, do you have any more questions of Liz or Liz, is there anything else you'd like to offer?
No, if you have any questions, I'm available. You have my email address. I know I had emailed you before, you know, with your interest. So feel free to reach out.
Sure. No, it's great to meet you, Liz. And I counted quickly, but how many were on the Council of Aging as permanent members? Again, it almost looked like about eight, but I looked at it quickly and I wasn't sure.
Like you mean scholarship committee?
I'm sorry, the scholarship committee. There were a lot on the scholarship one, that's why it wasn't. Yes, yes, I know it's.
That's good, yeah.
It's hard when you have two, you get them mixed up.
Yeah.
Okay, so if everyone's all set, I think we'll move on because Kendra from the Senior Center is waiting. So Liz?
I will leave. Nice to see everybody. Nice to meet you, Diane.
Thank you very much for interviewing me. Take care.
No problem. Take care, everybody.
Thanks.
Okay, so I am going to admit Kendra. Kendra, are you there? Ken, oh yeah, Kendra?
Yeah.
Hi there. I'm here with Adrienne. Actually, we're zooming together. It's just hard to get both of us in one screen.
Excellent, excellent. So Kendra, I don't, and Adrienne, I'm not sure if you've met Diane. Has, have you had a chance to meet?
We haven't, no. Hi, Adrienne. I'm Diane Irvin. Nice to meet you.
Nice to meet you, Diane.
Yes, I've met Kendra before though. Hi, Kendra.
Hi, how are you?
Good. How are you doing there?
Good.
So Diane is interested also in applying to the Council on Aging. And she has indicated in her application that she's done a lot of volunteering or work at senior centers and senior centers other than Northboro, correct, Diane?
Um, well, I'm not sure if I wrote that. I don't have it in front of me, but I've visited a lot of senior centers over the years. I have volunteered a lot with nursing homes and things like that growing up in my hometown. But not so much senior centers as the town of Northboro with, you know, things like softball in the schools. That's where I volunteered a lot.
Okay, so, so you're, so could you just talk a little bit about your interest in this particular committee? And some thoughts you might have about what you could do there?
Oh, sure. Basically, again, I've been a longtime Northboro resident. My grandparents retired to Northboro in the 70s and my mother retired to Northboro in the 80s. She's still in that same house. And now my husband and I have retired to Northboro in the 2020s. So I've seen it from all angles. I've seen the town grow, you know, so much over the years and change. And basically, now that I'm kind of a young senior, you know, just, I'm 60 years old. Basically, I'm going into town with a kind of a new lens now that I'm retired and I'm going into the senior center. And I see, you know, all of the great things that it has to offer. But I also see from a different lens and different areas that they can improve as well. Again, I know it's been kind of hard with the pandemic the past few years. And I think they've been good about trying to go both virtual and live. And I think that's an important thing to keep up with, you know, as seniors still can have health issues. And, you know, unfortunately, COVID is really still not fully over. And that's something they have to be careful of. But I think it's great they've been able to come back, but yet, you know, maintain some of the virtual programs too. Not only the senior center, but just other things in town, I think I would like to work on in the Council of Aging would be getting more housing, you know, at an affordable rate for seniors. Because again, my grandparents were lucky enough to be able to retire in their own home. And that was fabulous. But as I've seen my mother's friends get older and older, you know, I've seen sometimes they've gone to senior housing in different communities. And just to, you know, have that available, I think that seniors really, in my opinion, are just about, you know, our most important resource. With all the history and the hard work they've put in and given us, we can learn so much from them. I feel like a lot of our committees need to continue to work together in Northboro. I think like more partnering with the park and recreation would be helpful. I know during the pandemic, they certainly partnered with the Board of Health. But the more groups that can work with us, the better. I noticed, you know, with the schools, I notice when they have plays, they let the seniors know and, you know, for the dress rehearsal to come to the show. All of those kinds of things are very good, but I want those to be communicated even better. And just like I like things to be virtual and to be live, I want things to be able to be communicated in things like the community advocate, not just the computer. My own mother really is still reluctant to use the computer. So I will take her to different events at the senior center. And, you know, we're both seniors at different age levels, but, you know, we can go together to these events. But again, I think just publicizing them more. What I had, what I might, maybe what you might have been reading on the application was, I've had experience. I think what we need to do is just look, I have a lot of experience with the Auburn Senior Center and their travel club. We're friends with the woman that runs all of the trips. And I think that's a direction we go in and publicize it better and have more trips. I know the Auburn Center and the Holden Center work really well together. As they both offer similar trips with the Best of Times organization. So if we could partner with towns like Marlboro and Southboro and offer more for our seniors in that department, I think it would be economical and I think it would be so beneficial. Marlboro has great opportunities with Kennedy's Restaurant. They give a lot of their, I mean, they still pay for the meals at a discounted rate. But that particular program, I think, is fantastic, you know, just that the Kennedys will run that. And I know we have some really good programs too, you know, to keep those up. I went to the health one with my mother where January Wegmans had donated those beautiful salads. And the woman from Worcester State, who was the dietitian spoke, and that was fantastic. Also, we had pizza and pie in November, which was a Thanksgiving kind of a tradition. It was in the smaller room, so everyone was at the tables and able to talk with each other. But I think, you know, continuing to communicate would be really important. I think this is what the citizens want, you know, that are in that, you know, in that pretty good size age group, 60 to 80, working with different committees, such as working more with the schools. I know my school used to always have a Bridges program where they partnered seniors with elementary students. I can't actually say whether they do that at the elementary schools now because my student, my particular children, my two children who went to Algonquin are out of the elementary schools now. But programs like that where the kids learn from the seniors are just so critical. That the, again, the senior housing and just, you know, more communication, especially for people who don't necessarily use the computer. So those were different directions I would like to, you know, see Northboro go to enhance the lives of the aging community.
You're speaking to someone who was always talking about communication, so I really like that approach. But I have to let Adrienne and/or Kendra respond and, you know.
Adrienne had a quick question, I think.
I want to know if Diane had, that's the seniors newsletter.
I do. Well, it's kind of funny, Adrienne. I do get it in the mail once, you know. And I also will click on it ahead to get the next month's, which is on there early, you know, on the internet. So I do get that. I know it wasn't delivered until I was like 60. I couldn't get it until my birthday a couple of months ago. But, but yes, I do get the newsletter and I appreciate that. But I also have kind of found out about all these programs on the side that aren't in the newsletter and I don't understand why, which is.
Our newsletter gets, our newsletter has to be put together three months in advance. So if anything comes up within those three months, they can't make it in the newsletter. But as of now, our May newsletter is already being printed. So anything that comes up between now and May won't make it to the newsletter.
Okay, I think I'm thinking more like the golf leagues and the travel, those I kind of had to hear about through word of mouth.
We don't offer travel at the senior center. There's a separate group in town that does their own travel. So there is no travel through the senior center.
Okay, and what about the golf leagues?
So there is a golf club that meets in Northboro, but it's not necessarily a specific league. They have lunch here at the senior center and it's a senior game, but they play not at the senior center. So that information comes out on a seasonal basis, so it'll come out for spring. And that spring, the people who join in spring will play until the fall together.
Okay, because I know that was one that I had been very interested in, but I hadn't seen anything written. So that, if that's going to be in the April one, that will be good. Because like I say, a lot of them, I too tend to hear word of mouth, but I didn't, I do usually look ahead once the one for the next month is published. So that's great that, you know, it's good and bad, I guess. It's good that it's published early, but sometimes maybe not as good because you can't get everything in there.
Well, it's good for us because we don't pay for the printing of the newsletter.
Okay. Yep, yep, that makes sense. Sure. And I think maybe just having a larger bulletin board in the center when you first walk in is helpful too. Because I know a couple of times I've gone and asked someone and we have to walk down the hall to find a bulletin board and there's all kinds of things, but if it was right at the entrance, you know, that might be helpful to people that are just kind of coming in, you know, quickly to register for something and then, you know, leave rather than going way down a hallway.
Well, if you haven't been in regularly, they're doing it right next to the computer sign-in. So they do advertise things now. And when we built this building, the problem was where do we put that kind of communication? And it was, and we couldn't figure out a place that we could do it. We tried in between the two doorways, from the outside doorway.
Right, that seems ideal, yeah.
It didn't work out, so, yeah. So we keep trying, that's all, we try.
Right, right. That's all you could do, rethink it. Yep. And I know you were involved in the building of it. Yep, that's right. And it's a beautiful facility. I think just tweaking a few things, you know, that make the communication really good. But I think the newsletter is very good too, for sure.
We haven't let, I haven't brought in my partner, Jason Peral to.
He's the quiet man here on the committee.
If he has any.
Strive to do more listening than talking. But no, certainly the senior center has been kind of a, you know, gem of the Northboro community since it was constructed. And the staff and volunteers have done a terrific job there to try to make it as accessible and provide as many activities as they can. So we certainly appreciate the services that go on there and certainly welcome, you know, all ideas to continue to expand and improve what we're able to do there. I'm approaching an age where I might be more of a customer than a facilitator. But we just, I guess I'd like to emphasize that there's a lot of flexibility and a lot of nimbleness, I think, in what the senior center offers in terms of programs. And it's very fluid. And we certainly enjoy the variety of activities and events that they're able to support as well as, you know, outreach services and other, you know, other services that they provide to our senior community. So a very vibrant site, very vibrant group of people. And just appreciate all the work that the volunteers do, including members of the Council on Aging, to continue to sustain that.
Diane, do you have any more questions for Kendra or Adrienne or?
Um, no, it looked like there was just one opening in the Council of Aging, correct? When might I hear about that position, I guess, would be my one question.
So I'm glad you asked that question. On March 13th, when the, so Jason and I just talked about, you know, who we thought might be most interested in the various committees. Since you're applying for two, and we have three other people interviewing together today. Jason and I discuss, you know, our recommendations. And that goes before the full board on March 13th. So that's, you'll hear the day after usually from Diane Whackel, that vote. I mean, obviously you can watch the Board of Selectment meeting that night if you want. And you can certainly watch today just to see the deliberations. But I. But um, I, I, I think I have to move on because people are coming into the waiting room. So I just wanna say, it is so great to meet you. And I, I think you're gonna be just a terrific volunteer for whatever. And look forward to seeing you around town a whole lot now.
Yes, well, thank you all very much and you take care.
Good night, thank you Diane.
So Kendra and Adrian will stay on and I'm going to admit Paula Moore, okay?
Okay.
I'm new at this, please forgive me. Hello Paula, looks like you are muting yourself.
Yes, connecting.
Sorry Jason, what did you say?
Uh, I, I could see that uh, it was showing that she was still in the process of connecting her audio, uh, and then she vanished. So maybe she's retrying. Did she go back to the waiting room?
She's not in the waiting room that I can see. I wonder if she would mind terribly if we admitted, well, I have Allison. Della Rovir, but this is coming up Lydia.
And actually, Lydia is Allison.
Right, okay. Usually, sometimes that happens.
Uh huh, she said it to God as I can.
So uh, Jason, what do you think? Should we admit Allison or?
Let me, let me reach out to um.
Can you contact her, Diane?
To Paula, yep.
Okay.
Oh, here she is.
Give, give her a minute to reconnect if possible.
Yeah, she just did.
Hi Paula.
Other people have Zoom issues too, it's not just you and I.
Paula, there seems to be, um, we can't see you or hear you, if you could.
There's the microphone.
Oh, I think she might have unmuted.
Yes, hello Paula.
Hello, hi.
There you are.
Uh, do you want, do you want us not to see, or um, with, can you?
Are you trying to figure out how to turn your camera on Paula?
Uh, I thought it was on, but.
No, are you on a computer or are you on an iPad?
I'm on a laptop.
On a laptop, okay, if you put your mouse over the zoom screen, on the bottom. In the left corner, there should be what looks like a camcorder that says start video.
Yes.
If you click that, we should be able to, there you are.
Okay.
Yes.
Hi Paula.
This is the new world.
Yes, yeah, you're, it's okay, it happens all the time, that's why I know how to describe it, don't worry.
Yeah, thank you.
That was very good Kendra, cuz I don't even think that looks like a camcorder, but that's, that's a good one. So, welcome Paula.
Thank you.
You, you are here to talk about um, joining our council on aging. And before we move on from, for that, um, I think we all owe you a lot of thanks for the park.
Oh, thank you, yeah, well, that and through the Junior Women's Club. It, uh, it was, it's just so invigorating to be over there and see people using it in all aspects.
The town owes a lot to the Junior Women's Club.
Yeah, after it was.
I bet it was a lot of work.
Yeah, but we had community behind us. Once we started, John Shunder, he, a lot of people didn't like his attitude. But boy, he was wonderful. He, he, I'd say, we need somebody to do this. He said, somebody at Mass Electric can do that with us, and they did it for nothing. So it's better than what used to be. It used to be a literal dumping ground. People dropped off their stoves and refrigerators and just left them there.
Oh my gosh, wow, wow. So, so tell us about your interest in the Council on Aging.
Well, when I was a, a girl, uh, I started first grade teaching. And then I, I went into the nonprofit world and uh, worked for the United Way of Tri-County. And Greater Marlboro Programs was where I really got into the elder population. We'd go, uh, I'd have to go, I was a program manager at Greater Marlboro Programs and I had to go to several group homes. In Marlboro and one up in Andover and just talk to the people and see how things were going. And if there was a problem, I rectified it and so between that and the next job was with Bay Path. Oh, Bay Path has changed hands since, since those days, but same thing, it was visiting the elderly and. Um, then I was called in to be a special ed teacher at Algonquin, so that took me off of the nonprofit world. But I've always kind of been interested and involved in the senior center and uh, the council on aging. I think I worked with Adrian on a few things.
Just a few.
Just a few?
Is, is that an understatement?
That's an understatement and she's always there pushing and helping and I don't have to ask twice, this'll do it.
Yeah, I got some earrings I gotta get over there.
You missed them for the fair this year.
Oh, did I?
Yes.
Oh, oh, well, there's always next year.
Well, then we'll make twice as much next year.
Oh, only for you Adrian. And Kendra.
So it sounds like you're pretty familiar with the goings on there Paula.
Yeah, yeah.
Schedules and whatnot and.
Right, and now that I'm not the young girl, I can relate more and people can relate more to me from there. So I'm very comfortable in the situation.
Uh, Kendra, do you have any questions or comments, or Adrian?
Well, I know Paula so well that I think I could answer them for.
Yeah, you probably could Adrian.
Yeah, but I have worked with Paula since I moved in Northborough in two thousand and two.
Wow.
Yeah, it's been that long, but we work together to get the, those buildings up.
That's right, yep, thank you Kendra, huh?
Yeah, I wouldn't have my pink office if there wasn't a building, so.
In the pink.
And Jason, do you have anything to add?
Uh, sure, uh, Paula, could you um, maybe just talk about uh, what? Things the council on aging does that you have a particular interest in or ways you think you would like to contribute?
Uh, well, it's been so long since I was connected. You've probably changed things a little bit and added more to it. Because uh, we elders have branched out and uh, are doing a lot more different things. I have nothing specific to. Relate to, but I can see that it's, it's still busy over there.
Happy to step onto the council and assist with uh, uh, the work that they do, yeah.
Yeah, with whatever.
Yeah.
Kendra, what is the percent population in Northborough that's senior, senior citizens?
Uh, I believe it's about thirty percent.
Thirty percent, wow.
It's pretty significant. If it's not thirty, it's kind of creeping up. That's sort of the number that we focus on.
Yeah. And um, I, I, you know, it sounds like you're very familiar with things Paula. If, if no one has any other questions, I have a pressing question. Um, when you undertook the park project, how did that all start? With a, with a friend at a kitchen table, like how did you?
Well, I, I was president of the Junior Women's Club for many years. And uh, we were always looking for things that we could contribute to the town. And that seemed to be a reasonable step to take. And I was the foreperson on that. And again, with John Shunder, he was a good help instead of a pain like some people thought he was. Um, but he, he just helped things roll along and it, it just got bigger and better and. You know, what you see is just uh, the culmination of many dreams and, and hard work and pushing. Pushing to get things done as cheaply as we could, so the town wouldn't yap at us.
What, did it end up to be more than you imagined?
No, what was more than I imagined was the contributions, the monetary contribution.
Wow.
Came through and that's why we were able to do the Gazabo and it wasn't a burden on the town. Uh, it gave the Junior Women's Club something to work on every year. To uh, to make it better and I'm sure there's still plans to uh. Do something a little bit more. There's still more room there that could be utilized.
Yeah, now we have pickleball courts keeping up with the times, yeah.
Right, right.
As, as someone who grew up going to that park, I appreciate it. My grandfather used to take me there at least once a week when I was a kid, so.
I bet, I bet, yeah, and it's great to see families there in the summer playing pickleball with their kids. And of course, the high school kids use the basketball courts all the time or they use the track to ride their scooters and. Though they're not supposed to, but uh, yeah, it's always utilized in the good, good weather.
Jason, do you have anything that you'd like to finish up with?
Uh, no more questions. I think uh, just Paula, thank you very much for uh, your. You know, significant past service to the town and your interest in continuing to serve in this capacity on council of aging.
Well, thank you, I hope to do so. It's tough with three grandkids and all in sports. We've been going from hockey rink to hockey rink lately, but that's coming to an end and we'll start soccer shortly, so.
Yep.
Good for you. It was so nice to meet you. I've heard so much about you, so.
Well, thank you.
I don't know if you heard me say that um, that Jason and I will make our recommendations to the full board on March thirteenth. At our next meeting and then you'll hear shortly thereafter, okay?
Okay, thank you.
All right. And Kendra and Adrian, you'll stay on for Allison, right?
Yes.
Okay, and we are admitting here. And. Allison. Are you coming in? Um, Allison, it looks like you're, you're muted and no video right now, if you can hear me.
Uh, you need to unmute Allison, yeah, there you go.
Yep, sorry about that.
Hi.
Hi.
How are you? I'm Julianne. Jason is the other Board of Selectmen person. Um, we have Diane Whackel who is assisting us with the meeting. And um, have you met Kendra and Adrian from the Council on Aging?
I have not actually had a chance to meet them, so hello, everybody.
So Allison, you are a physical therapist.
Correct.
Uh huh, and in town for eight years.
Yeah.
Um, so, we usually start this by um, by welcoming you. First of all, thanks for offering to volunteer and just if you could tell us a little bit about why you're interested in, in this particular committee. We, you know, we of course were able to see your application, but the public has not been able to, so.
Okay, um, yeah, I think, you know, at this point in my, my life and my career, I'm at the point where I wanna start giving back to my community. And I kind of felt like this particular council was a good way, given um, my professional background. I, you know, I feel like I could add a little bit of a piece to um, the older adult population within the town of Northborough. And I'm interested in getting to see how, I don't have a lot of experience with um, local, you know, councils. So learning about the ins and outs of that and just seeing if it's something I could um, sink my teeth in and support the community that way.
You, you expressed that you have a particular interest and expertise in falls, correct?
Correct.
So um, have you done programs on that or?
Um, I do, I'm actually, right now I'm employed at a, in, in a senior living community in Hudson. Um, I'm the director of rehab there. I kind of run the therapy program and our primary focus is fall prevention there. Um, and I've done a fair amount of continuing education, um, specific to the realm of physical therapy. Um, but can certainly be um, applied in private homes, um, across community-based programs, a lot of different. Sources.
So at this point, I'm going to ask Kendra and Adrian to tell you about what they do and um. And they can answer any questions about the, the committee schedule and all of that sort of thing.
Great.
The, the council on aging does not make the programs. So we just have a direction in which way we want the director to work. The director does all the programming.
Okay.
Which is, it's better to have it on one person than to have a whole committee trying to do it. If you've done enough committees, you know it takes a long time to get anything done. But I do think that the council is very concerned about the population, the senior population in town.
Mm hmm.
We know now that there's about thirty-five percent of the population is over sixty. And in another ten years or so, the population will be fifty-fifty. And the whole state of Massachusetts were just getting older and older.
Mm hmm.
But, but then it has a bad part of it too. So, there's a lot more that we can do and help Kendra to do the things that does help her to get the job done. So, we meet once a month and that's about it, unless you're on a special committee.
Okay.
So uh, I'll, I can tell you a little bit about the senior center. We average about uh, sixty-five to seventy people every day. Here at the senior center that are coming in and out, um, and I, we have a monthly total around twelve hundred people.
Oh my gosh.
Um, so Fridays and we, so we have, you know, Mondays and Fridays kind of slow. But Tuesday, Wednesday, Thursday, you, we might have fifty-five people for lunch at any given point. Um, so we serve lunch here Monday through Thursday between twelve and one. It's a bistro. We have somebody who's cooking every day. It's not what you traditionally think of senior center food being like a meals on wheel meal. It's a, it's, it's made to order. It's more of a restaurant-style experience. Uh, we have a variety of programming. I started it last May. We've added thirty-one programs since then.
Great.
Uh, we are very busy. We have a lot of people that are interested particularly in physical, uh, physical fitness and exercise. Um, so we do cater quite a bit to that, but we also have things like music classes and emotional, uh, emotional wellbeing classes. We have things about fall prevention, general safety, nutrition, uh, sort of a variety, art classes. Um, so we try to offer something for everybody. Uh, we have, you know, card games and mahjong and sort of everything you can think of. Um, our, the building is pretty big. If you haven't been up here, I think it's about fourteen thousand square feet. Uh, we have offices, several classrooms, and then the large kitchen in our lobby. Um, I think it's a.
We're running out of space.
Yes, yeah. If, if you're ever interested, we're, we're pretty active. Our Facebook page is pretty active. We post a lot about what we're doing. So if you're ever looking and you wanna see, you know, kind of what's going on here, um, if you look on the town's website, we also upload our monthly newsletter. So that has information about what we're offering month to month.
Jason, do you have any, anything to ask or add?
Uh, yes, um, could you tell me a little bit more about your fall prevention kind of program? Have you conducted that program, um? Uh, is it like in a community group setting or something like that?
Yes.
It's an interesting kind of experience, I guess. It's a, it's a, a, a unique kind of experience to bring to the table.
Yeah, so I am, through the world of physical therapy, you know, I've completed um, multiple certifications. So I'm technically considered a certified fall prevention expert, I think was the terminology. Um, basically, it's a matter of taking continuing education courses and then you um, do an examination and they. Um, if you pass the exam, you're considered the expert. So I've carried that over to my professional background. Where I use, um, actually the CDC's program, um, which is called the STEADY. It stands for stopping elderly accidents, deaths and injuries. Um, and it's a series of functional outcome measures, so it's standardized tests um, that have been researched. And um, through evidence, been. Through evidence been proven to predict, um, an older adult's risk for falling. So I use my clinical expertise, um, primarily in my, in my job and then, um. In some community-based programs, I've done this as well, where I screen, specifically screen an individual. Um, and based on how they perform in that test, I can determine their risk for falls and how high that risk is. Whether they're a significant risk or maybe could just benefit from a little bit of, um, exercise or a few modifications to their home. We use that to generate whether or not they're appropriate for therapy, um, in, from a physical therapy standpoint or occupational therapy. But then we also use it just to, um, provide them with some education.
Great. Sounds very, very valuable.
I think so.
Allison, um, Ed, this, this would be your first board or committee that you're joining in town?
Correct.
Okay, great, great.
You could mold me into how you needed me to be someone.
Everyone loves to hear that. So, um, if no one else has anything else, um, I'm gonna have to move on to the, um, the next committee interview. But let me just say, thank you so much. It was lovely to meet you and thanks Kendra and Adrian. Everybody okay with us moving ahead?
Yeah.
Julia, I just want to double check, uh, um, because I'm losing track with the candidates. Did we? Mentioned that, uh, our subcommittee makes a recommendation to the board and the board will be entertaining those recommendations at the March thirteenth meeting. So that's when any appointment decisions will be voted by the full board of, uh, select board.
Okay, thank you. I don't think we told Allison that. Thanks. All right. So I'm going to say goodbye to you all and admit the next.
Okay.
Two people. Thanks so much.
Good night.
Good night.
So I hope that I have Jen and Suzie with us now. Jennifer Martin and Suzie Sizlika. Looks like you're coming in.
Good evening.
Hi Suzie.
How are you?
Very well. How are you?
Oh, busy. Kindness Week has been growing so much. It's been going fantastic. So I just wanna, um, we had a Bollywood dance workshop tonight. Um, that I was able to go to the beginning of and it was fantastic. My daughter did not want to leave. She's like, I do not want to leave. So we're gonna try to, um, have one actually this summer, like an outdoor one. Um, we had, we had a coffee hour with Chief Parenti yesterday. I'm gonna try to organize another one next month with him. Just to do kind of a question and answer on the fire station and the fire truck for him, um, and get to know him. Try to get some kids, you know, kids coming in and seeing them during the day and then. Um, we had Becca today, so got to meet some, um, new townspeople as well. And we have Chief Liver tomorrow and we have Mitch coming and he's happy to go to the club then on Thursday, so. For some coffee hours, we have a book reading tomorrow. And, um, she's a former teacher at Z and she wrote a book. She's doing, um, a presentation on kindness too, so, and then hopefully the storm will stay away and we can do kindness in the common again on Friday.
Wow.
Nice.
So it's been exciting, yeah.
So Jen, from what I understand, has been attending your meetings or tell, Jen, can you say hello?
Yes, um, yeah, hi, everybody. You can hear me, right?
Yeah, it sure can.
Okay, all right, great. Um, yeah, I've been going to them, it probably three months maybe? That sound about right? Yeah, the past several months, I would say. I would say longer. Yes, it's been definitely longer than three. All right. Yeah, she's been filling in as a member, um. She just doesn't vote on the budget stuff or the minutes. Um, but basically, and but she'll remind us, like if we left something out on minutes. Or a decision or something, but you know, reviewing the bands, um, helping call people. Um, being at a concert if we need a representative, being somewhere if we need someone. Um, giving an opinion, helping out, um, she's just there. And as I said, like, we're just, we're hands-on. And I didn't want to say no and Jen is, you know, friends with a lot of us and if you want to be part of our committee, just come. Officially, you can't, you know, you can't vote on the budget and you can't, or not the budget, but the, um, financial report. You can't vote on the minutes. But we don't really vote on anything else. It's all collaborative. So we, you know, we talk about who our sponsors are. She's been helping out with sponsors. She's been helping out with the band review. We just, we make decisions. We all kind of divvy up the work and she's been there the whole time, so. It's, it's been really helpful because we are, we haven't, but we try to expand and we try to change. We don't like this. East tail for the community, um, as you know, so. She's definitely, um, been mu- very helpful, so thank you. I've been trying to do what I can, showing up where I can show up and. So, yeah, it's been, it's been good and I think it's been a good way to, to kind of. Attend the meetings and start it slowly to make sure that it makes sense, so. Um, I think it's good timing to kind of do this interview and officially take a spot if possible.
I, I mean, that's almost the ideal circumstance, actually, to have.
Yeah.
Been participating essentially and, uh, getting, you know, the feel of what the committee does and what your interest is and, you know. Choosing to go forward with it, so. I, I, I appreciate your expending that effort, you know, to investigate it, to pursue it and, and to come to the conclusion that, you know. Basically, you'd like us to formalize what you have already been doing informally to this point, so.
Yeah, yeah, that would be, that would be great. So far, so good. It's a good, a good group of people, a lot of great events. Um, so definitely happy to be a part of it.
And Jen, this is, this is, uh, the only committee that you're involved in right now or? I, I mean, in terms of town boards and committees, you're probably.
Yes.
Oh, okay.
Yep, no more, no more town committees.
And I just want to say, I, I'm so impressed that you, in your application, you spoke a lot about town cleanup and how much you love that.
That's probably my favorite one. I don't, I, like, ever, when we first moved to the town and I heard about that. I was like, this is the best and I got the kids involved. I just think it's so good. So that is hand down my favorite one.
Corner with a, with a bright yellow bag, right?
It's so good. It's so like, just getting everyone involved, something that needs to be done and, um, yeah, I, I love it.
Right.
Yeah, it's a, it's a good one and I, and it's always, it's really well attended, right? Everyone, I mean, it seems to be when I, I remember just looking at the signups the first year and people grab those streets. And then the Boy Scouts do groups and the school groups do groups, so, yeah, I lo- I love that one.
So since you've been very active with the committee, um, I don't know if you have any more questions for Suzie. But, um, the, the one thing we do have to tell you is that. Um, so Jason and I will recommend, uh, you know, after this meeting. And we have to, you, you would, you would have to be approved by the entire board and our next meeting is March thirteenth. So just in time for town cleanup, so.
Okay, sounds good.
Does anyone have any other things to talk about or offer, or Suzie, do you want to put in one more plug for anything else?
Well, what, besides, uh, besides the, um, Kindness Week, we will be doing, we're gonna be looking for. If you know any new women-owned businesses, I'm gonna be updating our website with that. We always have that tab open. Um, and please watch our website. I've been working with the Historical Society. They got me some great write-up on the school and the women that the ne- the schools were named after. We'll be posting those because I'm not from here. I don't know who the schools were named after. I've been talking to people that, you know, other parents that actually grew up here. They're like, I don't know who Margaret Peaslee was, you know, so we're gonna be posting those. Um, and also we, I've been working with, um, some people on the Be Well Committee. And for the Be Well Week, we are trying to turn the Louise School Town Cleanup is gonna kind of be the kickoff. Of the Be Well Week, because it starts that Be Well Week. So, um, Marielle and Dugan will be at the Be Well Kickoff. Or we'll, we'll have the kickoff at our, um, at the Town Cleanup Event, so that's exciting. And we set our dates for the concerts and I'm, I'm ju- I'm very excited and it's like, I have a really hard time keeping. Like keeping news in and it's like, if I get a gift, like at, you know, the holidays, I always, if I see the person. I just want to blurt out what I got them and like, it's very hard for me to like, keep things under wraps. But I'm, I'm, I'm just gonna say the town's gonna be very excited with the lineup.
Oh, the big reveal to come later, huh?
The big reveal will be coming later, but you're gonna be, you're gonna be very excited. I can vouch, I can vouch for it, yes. But I just, I, it's like very hard for me to not blurt it out, yeah. I avoid people like before their birthdays because like, I want to just blurt out what I get them. Thank you guys so much.
Thank you. Jason, are we all set?
I think we are all set.
Okay, Jen, so nice to meet you.
Yes, you too. Thank you guys.
Thanks for coming.
All right.
Good night.
Good night. Bye.
Bye.
So Jason, are you still with me?
Yes, I am.
Okay, so.
Uh, all, I think all excellent candidates for the positions they're applying for, so I think, uh. Uh, this is pretty easy work this evening, um, and perhaps the only, uh, um. Consideration we have to give is the fact that, uh. Uh, Diane Irvin was applying for two different positions, uh. And in one of those cases, we have, uh, Council on Aging, which has two seats available and three applicants, uh. Uh, in that case, uh, so. Um. Uh, I, I don't know how you want to approach it. Do you want to talk about that first or do you want to, um? Uh. Take care of Community Affairs?
So, uh, so let's start with that. Um, yes, you're absolutely right and I think that, that we're in a really good position here because. Um, Diane obviously is, is qualified for both, um. And, and obviously, I think that she, she would be great on scholarship. She'd be great on Council of Aging. But we do have the other two excellent candidates and as we discussed at our meetings. We, we like to, um, give everybody a chance to serve on boards and committees, so. My thought is Paula and Allison for Council on Aging and, um. Diane for Scholarship. What do you think?
I, I think I'm leaning that way. I think maybe Diane made this a little easier for us by, uh, applying for the two spots and, uh. Uh, with her educator background, with her, uh. You know, her own direct experience, uh, um, both as a, a volunteer and as, uh. A parent of children who benefited from scholarships during their educational process, uh, I think she had a lot of, uh. A lot of interest, a lot of passion for wanting to, to be able to contribute to that and so I'd be very comfortable, uh. Recommending her for that position, um, and, uh. And going with the other two candidates for Council on Aging and I would like to talk about them a little bit more in that regard also, um. Uh, with their qualifications, but I'm just, do you, do you think that's, uh.
And also, as you said, that she has, has served on committees and, and just, you know, decided on applicants for scholarships. So I think she's, she's perfect there, um.
And, and the fundraising too was another aspect of that. Um, it seemed to me that she had. Some, uh, you know, past experience and enthusiasm and energy for fundraising, which is really. Quite a critical component of, of, or what will be a critical component for that committee because they are looking to. Uh, increase their funding and increase the number of students they're, they're able to assist. So I think that's a big part of that.
Mm-hmm, some new ideas there too, yeah. So, um, do, do you want to make a motion on, on Diane for Scholarship and then we'll go to the next?
Well, I, I.
Or do a lot of the.
I think, let's talk about all the candidates first, yeah, in each of their respective, um, applications, right, right?
Okay.
I think we've, I think we've kind of settled, uh, uh, on Diane. Yeah.
And Paula, of course, is, has certainly proven. Quite capable and, um, and interested and has experience, um, working with senior citizens. There's no doubt in my mind that she'd be, and, and also she's already very familiar. She's been volunteering up there, obviously, so she'd be.
Just a, a demonstrated strong track record of, uh, contribution to the community. So I think that, uh, is a very easy decision to, to arrive at.
Mm-hmm.
Yeah.
And Allison, so Allison brings an interesting talent and experience in education. I personally think that that's, um. With her experience, I think she said that she works in an assisted living facility and. Boy, I, I mean, she has, you know, experience working with, with. The senior citizen population and, um, just a, you know, an interesting background. That I don't know that we have on the Council of Aging, so. I think she'd be perfect there.
Not, not to inject any ageism into the discussion, but I think, um, uh. You know, she, she comes as a younger person, generally speaking, uh, um, and provides. You know, a different perspective and also provides the professional background, um, that, that certainly dovetails, I think, uh, very, very nicely here. Um, so, uh, I think the combination of the two, uh. Uh, applicants, Paula with her long record of experience and Allison with her, um. You know, kind of coming in as a new member, newer member of the community or whatever and, uh, and getting involved with town committees and. Wanting to learn, but also having certain. Uh, I don't know, professional credentials or something that I think would be, uh, a good contribution, um, to the, to the activity of the Council on Aging.
I, I agree.
So.
I agree. And then Jen?
Oh, well, I mean. Yeah, Jen. For all intents purposes, Jen is a member of the Community Affairs Committee and we are just going to, uh, uh, confirm that. So I certainly appreciate the effort she's already made to engage with the committee, to. Uh, understand the work that they're doing, to participate in whatever way she can as a, you know, non, uh, non-voting member and, uh. And, you know, uh, uh, determined for herself that it is something she does want to have further, um, involvement with. So that's kind of a perfect circumstance for a volunteer to have, uh. Have developed that experience, that understanding of what the committee does and, and confirm that they have. You know, the interest to, to make that commitment and want to step forward and do it.
I, I can't add anything to that. I think that's, that's perfect and she's definitely an enthusiastic volunteer, so, um. So shall we move on to the for- formalities?
Uh, I'd be happy to, um. Let me begin with the Scholarship Committee. I move the Interview Committee vote to recommend Diane Irvin for appointment to the Scholarship Committee for a term to expire on April thirty, twenty twenty-six. At the March thirteen, twenty twenty-three Selectman's Meeting.
And I'll second that and how do you vote?
I vote aye.
And I vote aye, okay. Um, next?
Next, uh, Community Affairs Committee. I move the Interview Committee vote to recommend Jennifer Martin. For appointment to the Community Affairs Committee for a term to expire on April thirty, twenty twenty-six at the March thirteen, twenty twenty-three Selectman's Meeting.
And I'll second that and how do you vote?
Aye.
And I vote aye. Do you have a motion for Paula?
Council on Aging. I move the Interview Committee vote to recommend Paula Moore for appointment to the Council on Aging for a term to expire on April thirty, twenty twenty-four. At the March thirteen, twenty twenty-three Selectman's Meeting.
I'll second that and how do you vote?
Aye.
And I vote aye.
And finally, I move the Interview Committee vote to recommend Allison King for appointment to the Council on Aging for a term to expire on April thirty, twenty twenty-four. And finally, I move the Interview Committee vote to recommend Allison King for appointment to the Council on Aging for a term to expire on April thirty, twenty twenty-four at the March thirteen, twenty twenty-three Selectmen's Meeting.
And I'll second that. How do you vote?
Aye.
And I vote aye. Is there any other business that we should talk about?
I don't believe there is. Uh, I would just uh, you know, thank all of these candidates for coming forward. They uh, provide very good credentials and are very suitable for the positions, I believe, that we're recommending them for. And I look forward to uh, making those recommendations at our March thirteen meeting.
I agree. And Jason, I do want to also thank you for stepping up today and filling in for Kristen. That was really great. I appreciate it.
You're welcome. Happy to do it.
Thanks.
We just need a motion to adjourn.
I move to adjourn.
Thank you.
I'll second that. How do you vote, Jason?
Aye.
Aye. And I vote aye also. Thank you so much, Diane.
You're welcome. We'll see you.
Good night, Julianne. Good night, Diane.